The month of May is coming, graduations every time, every time you turn around.
There you go, I have some more.
Hey, thanks.
Yeah, it's.
It's calmed down immensely.
It's like.
It's ancient six tent.
I couldn't believe it. We're in Dublin ancient six tents.
I think the Friggin' Martin was the last one.
The other day, well, yesterday morning, Cole said all he had was four tents and U-Dad ancient three tents.
Ross third.
Yeah. We are rich.
Morning, Wes.
They almost paid more to print that and send that to us.
So, I'll give that back. Oh, I've got all those copies.
Oh, okay, alright, alright.
Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Oh, big one, that didn't have ours.
We have another, we have a pub appearing too for.
At ten o'clock, yeah.
Ten o'clock, yeah, nine thirty and ten, nine forty-five and ten.
Yeah.
Those should be short. We had, uh, stuff and pills done up about the courtyard, the Bible study or whatever.
Don't know anything about it, but they usually do it every year.
Yeah, it's been on our desk since, I think, I was here last Thursday, but it's not on the agenda, I wonder maybe if there is a reason or just wait till next week. I mean, it's not a hot topic.
I think they want it for the, uh, for June Bible reading.
I suppose you're gonna ask me for.
Yep, I wanna see it and then put it on the agenda, make sure it's there. Alright, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, you gotta bill me off. There it is. Being a Sunday, nice day to relax, it was just a nice day for kind of off and on rain yesterday. I looked out a couple times, well, I got a fiberglass overhang and you can always kind of hear that on the moon. Heard three or four times out there, it's like, okay, I'm just gonna go back to watch the race. How's the well drilling going, Dan, for Poshik water?
Good, we're gonna have, we gotta, I gotta get a man up tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, make some grinders. Let's drill some new wells down there and then let's drill three out here. So hopefully that will, we're pumping about eighty-seven percent of what we need, hopefully these screened wells will be able to set extra. But we did have to shut the sprayer off, because they just use so much water. Hate to do that, but hate to have people out of water a lot worse than what we do that. But it's, it's kind of, we're supposed to have those wells on my first of June, so.
Once you get the wells up, will you be taking new customers again or hold on?
Depending on, probably depending on production, if we have any extra water, we will, but if not, we just, we're not taking any new customers this time. Because of that, so. So, you know, some of it is.
So, we're still on well water and we're always like, well, you know, if we have to, we could, oh, and then you set that up and we go, we better not run out of water, because we can't get a new customer now.
Yeah, I mean, now, it'll, you know, it'll get better.
Yeah.
Hey, just, it's, it's, I think you'd probably do it two by four, maybe two by six. Get a couple buckets, couple ropes, hang them on it, just put them on your shoulders and you walk down the creek.
I'm surprised they didn't go by this weekend, I was trying to catch the laundry.
What side of the road is the?
Oh, she gets on the other side.
Yeah. Just like me.
Because we have checked into it before.
Buy a piece of land over there, put a well on it.
There you go.
Just go get her water over there.
So, Dan, I have a quick question about the wells, can, can we drill deeper, uh, out there? Would that get us more water?
Well, we're looking into that.
Yeah. Because where I live, there used to be a, what do they call it, sand, you have sand?
Sand.
Sand point, yeah, they had a sand point there, you know, they pulled it up before we bought the house. It's right there on E forty-nine, I mean, it's pretty low, the land is. Of course, our river's not that far away from you.
Yeah, when I.
We bought our place out there.
Checked into it.
Of course, with Poshik water on the highway, on state highway, you don't just trench down underneath the road, you've got to bore the whole thing. And they said we'd start at ten.
Nope.
They says, we don't have our own boring machine, so, did they ever buy their own boring machines? Back then, they didn't, and they says, well, it's probably gonna be ten just to get across the water or the road, and I said, no, you're not bringing it over.
No, they, yeah, they've got their own boring machine, bore a lot. All that new, all that new Iowa thirty, and then you bore a lot of that stuff.
Back then, it was like, ninety-eight, no, I wasn't spending that kind of money.
My mom and dad lived five miles south of Waterloo and they had it.
Yeah.
And, uh, but before that, man, these, my mom had blonde hair and she couldn't wash her hair, it was so rusty. She'd come to town and get gallons of water from daddy's, just to wash her hair. So, it was a great thing for them, I mean.
It is great, it's really good water.
Yeah.
Deeper, the, the deeper the wells, the more minerals are in them. If you get down in Jordan Bay, you know, that's been there for hundreds of years and that water dilutes everything, it wants to dilute everything and dissolve everything. And that's why there's a lot of water, there's a lot of minerals in it. I had a bigger grill, well, six hundred fifty feet, and I asked the guy that was doing it, I said, how's the water, and he said, well, there's a lot of water there, you might gotta chew it.
He went down six hundred feet?
Six hundred something, yeah.
Yeah, that's. Our well going just over a hundred feet deep. Which surprised me being up on that hill. And it's good water, got a little rust in it, but we just, in the water softener, we just put some rust pellets.
Sure, sure.
Other than that, it's good water, so. So, Poshik didn't get their. Customer there.
Well, our wells are about fifty, sixty foot deep, so.
Yeah.
Have you had your water tested?
Water tested, Poshik water?
No, oh, which wells are fifty, sixty foot deep?
Poshik fifty and sixty foot.
Okay.
They test.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With their wire, you gotta do that.
The one foot.
We're now number two on the list.
You see the last one on the engineers? Yep, you got it.
Yep.
Why was, uh, play them so high last, last year, remember? Was there a bunch of rock on there or something?
There was a lot of, there was some rock, there was last, some of the last payments to MLS or whatever, I see there.
From the, the, the chaw.
Yeah.
I know I got to Poshik to get farms. Mainly for the house at the, where I used to live. I have it at both places for insurance purposes, for cattle. And here, a month ago, I had a pressure tank go out in the Deepwater Park. Well, it was almost a week before they could get a new tank to put in. Well, I used three, four thousand, you know, just that quick.
Hundred eighty-four miles.
That's why I got it.
Twenty minute meeting.
With the last, I just assume it's two thousand five hundred.
Four hours.
Tammy's. They've got extra.
They're just doing chase night old chatter.
Then our, my meeting Friday, I've an Eldor, it was two hours, we went from every other, every other month to every month. Uh, you would think I'd maybe cut it in half, but, yeah, still an hour.
Well, you know, if, uh, if the chairman moves that right along, it could be two hours, but. Get, let everybody talk and then get on the sidebars and talking about everything else, it, uh, they run pretty long, yeah.
Like I say, the one in Tomlin Thursday, it'll be fifteen, twenty thirty.
Little well. Then next week, or next month, they're gonna build a decorum meeting, that's gonna be. Forty-five minutes probably, or do an hour. For social services. Lot of running.
So, I'm curious about the public ordinance. And Tammy said that it was on the quest of the heart one. I've gone through like a little five of those kind of agendas and myths and I don't see it coming up anywhere in anyone's. So, I'm trying to decide, you know, do we have to jump into this or? I mean, I would just, I would just, I don't know, just send the needs asking questions.
Well, last week I went down, did a, helped a buddy of mine, he has a big retaining wall. Eight hundred five blocks, and we just narrowed it, moved it twelve inches because it was leaning, and rebuilt it, and it's like, I don't know.
I've got a hard one.
Did about eight and a half.
Where you live?
Track come on in?
Two a yawn and it's block.
So, they won't just expect Thursday, or the place or state in the four by.
I don't pardon that, they didn't have.
Back in the day, they had.
So, that's okay.
Yeah. I don't remember where I used to be.
I understand the good union and.
Boys and girls are ranked in top ten.
I understand that's not part of the.
Girl group.
Down great.
So, I would, I would.
Back on block has a one inch lip, that's the road from here, at the first row.
Yeah.
The whole is more than great, so, to get it to level. He's playing up, putting in your drive. Make sure you don't.
What my brother is, was, he was in Oklahoma, he put in like a two.
We didn't think that's.
I mean, I've done that.
A lot of things that he uses.
He uses it as a tool, so it does get out of line and they got some.
I ran a two hundred in that.
That's it. Talking to another one, so, uh, they have. So, there was psychology, you're just packing up, they're very good at that, so. Here, it's real, he put in the wall and other people come in, the department heads, they ask questions, they do all that, they don't have. And they don't, and they don't allow that. So, they're pretty lenient here.
Just watch. That's, uh.
Shouldn't have to do it again, I'm not.
And I.
We had a kid this year.
You ought to be able to come in and bring up anything. Very big thing, you know, this stuff.
I said a year and a half, two years.
We were thinking about.
Bullying. We have forty-nine. Bigger, stronger.
Yeah.
We're not good at this. We give everybody opportunity.
Maybe they didn't, maybe they don't drink as much as we did.
We thought, we asked people that question.
They say that a lot.
And, and we don't have to do that.
No, I.
I mean, so we're trying.
As long as being down.
I had a meeting.
But I look down at Southern.
Got down there, guys go to the later fault.
Well, I, I'll, I'll wait for your report, I just.
Did not say, see somewhere they're trying to take the hurdle.
We didn't have. Well.
Are you kidding, did you get any arenas?
Yeah.
I think our guy, our four and then two drive.
Yep, you're driving with my son, because we had ancient six tent.
I think they go west, they go north. But a lot of.
Or numbers as a piss hat, I says, no.
My daughter, my second daughter. My tools, my wheels, all play away from. Anything else.
Some sort of.
That's a two hour drive.
That's.
My son lives down in Mount Pleasant, so I know it's a two hour.
I've been, I've been down there four times already this year. I've been down there scouting.
Once you get to Highway thirty, you can drive all the way to Mount Pleasant and never stop. Just put her on cruise.
Actually, I watched a lot of Diver.
Again.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
Did you see my conversation? No, I didn't.
You have to on the way back.
I just said, I think. Have a conversation.
Most people don't stop that, I do.
Well.
Money wise, you know.
You'll be nicer, they're getting a lot of work done.
Broke again.
Thirty right now, so.
I remember winter smooth, Cedar Rapids.
Be able to be.
It was, it was a long trip to church every Sunday, because thirty was good. Which is now, it's been tougher to cost, I think. I first started running that county. I first started running out there.
Oh, yeah.
Quite usually. You wanted to get when I got off.
We never get anything.
We used to have to go through every town in the bottom, because they only had four lane outside of town. They followed you through every single town.
It's cool, it'd be nice, but I've still got his. Email. I did find out. Fill it up. I have not. Right on it, we're the same all the time.
We're broken out.
If you look at it, you have a lot of interstate, or interstate style, but it's in. We have, we have three, you know, which is across the nation city. It doesn't go all the way.
So, she drove out to my place and brought you some.
Don't keep her coming. Even busy?
Well, stopping now because of the rain, but.
Few emails, one or two?
This is crazy. Todd's mother. There's a lot of.
Boy, I'm not sure that any others are really.
I did too, I was surprised.
I, I couldn't go.
I went to the rear side service, I couldn't go to the service, because it was a, it was my address, so, yeah. Boy, it's.
How disappointing. That you didn't have it. Disappointed. Why did she have it at the youth church instead of her own church?
Because Irene was a member of our church, I mean, I can tell you exactly where she sat, with her husband. I always miss.
Still here.
And it was a family left thing too, so Todd Cruzy was at the cemetery, but I doubt he went into town. Laura called, she didn't feel good this morning, so she drove, she drove out to my house with this stuff.
How are you feeling, you were out for a while, she said, right?
Yeah. I'm okay. We planned to be out, you know, that's honest feeling, we brought it down, a mail call. Yeah, we did, so we used it, but I just use it a little bit every morning unless cereal. After a few days, I smell this stuff, it's Lance.
So, that would be, you know, good. That's not good?
I quit doing it, give me some fresh milk. I really think, I really think I collect, because a number of other people.
Oh, yeah.
Be a dumb bunt, I think I had that, and then this was on top.
Did you guys get one?
Oh, wow.
Glad you're better than. So, we had a couple different ways, it's the seven tents one day and four tents the next, and it's a total, I think, in the last week, we got the amateurs, so.
But the farmer, I think you get about ninety tents.
Okay, chill, chill, yeah.
I'm glad you've gotten that.
Yeah, exactly. Got a little bit of hail, but it didn't, uh, didn't damage anything, so.
I feel like I should be running for something away.
I know, right?
Running away, I know.
Morning, Harry.
She's all been feel good this morning, so. So, I'm.
Uh, well, I talked to.
Oh, who's gonna even give her this, if you seen her? This is for the paper, okay, I'll get it to her.
All right. She covers one side of the county, I cover the other side.
Okay, all right, I'll get it to her, thank you.
No, no problem.
Have a good weekend.
Yeah, I didn't do much, so, that's always a good weekend.
It's good rainy day probably. Looking up your space here?
Oh, no, I was just trying to put it aside, so, I didn't take up any of your space there. How was your weekend?
Good, we went yesterday afternoon to Cedar Rapids, my, my son plays orchestra, and he's involved with all these musical things. First, first week in church in Cedar Rapids, which is, musical thing once a month, and we went down yesterday, it was neat, it was good, so.
I had piano lessons when I was younger, but, uh, my piano teacher ended up actually threatening me with a bat towards the end, because I wouldn't practice. I went nuts, so, uh, that didn't work out.
Yeah, well, you know where my son got musical taught, so, uh, but. Now, he's got a tremendous voice, almost as good as Depp's voice. And, uh, uh, my wife's mother was passed away. And for the funeral, my son taped records. So it's great. It was awesome. You can imagine where his son, and David's voice. He actually played the orchestra and recorded singer at the same time. I was just sitting there going. How? Is there one of those? You got a copy of it?
I got a copy.
Just wanna make sure. Maybe Jim would bring some birthday gifts home.
You know, Tim that drove his Ranger in here today, so that might have been a little dangerous, you know, it was traffic. But is it his birthday today?
Nancy's was, this, either the end of the week.
I think I missed it on my Facebook, what reminded me about birthdays, I'm like, I don't know any of his birthdays are, but it doesn't tell me. My husband was yesterday. Yeah, because you're like, that's all right. Yep, then the kid's his birthday, it's Friday, so. This company.
Well, I was asking her about this.
They have twins, aren't they?
Two years apart, it's not like.
How'd you do that, plan it?
I guess, I mean, it was August when it conceived, so, you know, it might have been barbecue and a drink and all, so. Exactly, it's so painful, right? I don't know, it just literally happened that way.
You know, scheduling, uh, C-section.
So, I went in Friday, and my wife was on the Skydive, so I was induced Monday, and I'm like, it's my son's birthday, can we do Tuesday? My husband's like, if you're induced, you should probably get it out in the night, fair enough. So, yeah, so I went in, I'm born in, and I got plans, I'm gonna get this baby out. So far, it's good, I mean, there's give and take, they both are happy, they don't get presents at least.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be hard to like, I'm gonna have to, as I get to her, be like, this is your day, to like, go out, you know, somewhere.
Like each other, hold Andrew on the.
Yep, we can try to pick like, you know, one food, one.
My wife and I haven't seen a birthday. So I only have to figure out once. Now, we didn't wanna leave Ben or.
So which one are you celebrating? Just like my youngest brother, his birthday's a day after mine. My youngest brother.
No.
God, you're always celebrating together.
But my, my wife and I are different years. I always say she's a lot younger. At least a year.
At least a year. One of the ladies in our church is never seven. More than twenty.
So when, when he gets married.
So I told us, save a little money for forty-four.
Yeah, tell the kids that when they get older, like.
It's kinda nice out here. Growing up some rest.
We know a lot of times, a lot of kids.
Although I have to drive them. Hand me down some board for L T D.
Yeah, my birthday's seven seventeen. My brother's son is eleven seventeen.
I remember I played bass. Come on, the brothers. Can you call him on you tonight?
Yeah, at least I remember, I just gotta remember the years.
Park Street. It's a lot of people's park out there, watch, and it's like the fence and about a foot of grass and a curb. This kid hit a wall around the neck. I'm in the dugout. Smack right into windshield, right, just fire right in it, like. What, I was going over the cars, like, jeez. Thank God you didn't let me. Right in the windshield, guess who got it?
What was it at before though?
You know?
How much is it?
You don't wanna.
It's ten five seven.
You didn't know somebody's gonna go around. Eventually. Might have a lot of time, you're okay there.
Somebody asked me a question. Changes in property tax.
Way out.
It was a big jar.
What kind of timing is that?
That's pretty good timing. I'm trying to get a look at that, wasn't talking to the baseball, he's a disease. I've been doing a lot of, looking at the. So, yeah, so basically, the complaint was, and the. And he jumped the whole bunch. What they had was a combined rule, I was just in the regular next lady. The Brazil is. The number. Only because the new. Just.
I had, I had my fans. I had a rocket to windshield. That'll blast just. This is, this is. The Legion of Colorado. Oh, okay, alright, alright, I have to start the meeting with a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, start with a public comment. You know. You know how it works.
You are very photogenic, and you should have put a racing cap or something on.
What's that?
So you could advertise something when you're getting your picture taken, five or six or seven times.
Where was that at?
For, for the awards, did you?
Oh, yeah?
Those pictures turned out good.
Did they?
Yes.
Yeah? It didn't, it wasn't shining, was it?
It had a halo, you got a halo.
That might be a question you didn't wanna ask. That's true. That's true. We got some nice needed rain this last couple days, nice come down. Little bit over an inch, I'm, from what I hear, from most places.
Really, that wasn't my place.
Uh, you didn't get an inch?
No, we had one or two tins. One or two tins. Or maybe a little more.
I was better in those tornadoes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tuesday.
A little town in Minden, it's scary, see somebody passed away, that one dude that was in a hospital. That was on, this morning when I drove down.
What did you just say?
There was a gentleman that got injured in those tornadoes, and he passed away this morning.
Yeah.
Or last night.
Last night.
Where's he from?
Minden, is that how you come out to Minden?
Yeah, Minden, so, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I got a good friend that, uh, his house caught on fire. There was an electrical problem, and I think electricity went backwards into his house, didn't shut off his breaker. For some reason, it didn't shut off. And of course, all his outlets. Like, went on in flames, you know? And, uh, he lost his house, in Minden. In Creston.
I was just gonna say, those are the worst two ways to lose, cause you lose everything. Tornadoes and fires, you lose, you know, pictures and just everything.
Yeah, everything.
You'll work for Tuesday.
You ever find any morale as much?
You have to raise your hand first, yes.
Oh, excuse me. I, I thought I'd come and have a question.
I haven't seen, I seen a couple pictures on Facebook, and there weren't.
Yeah, pretty skim, pretty, they're, totally fine, plenty of them, and, uh, it's, uh, gummy, zorny. But you could hold them in, all plenty of them in your hand. Little raised.
Little babies.
Yeah, they'll come.
Get some, some sunshine on this moisture.
There isn't much sunshine coming this week.
No, there isn't.
When is it too late then?
Well, the temperature's gotta get up, it's still cool. Not sure when, when the ground temperature gets above a certain point, they probably quit coming up there. Not sure what that is.
Yeah, everybody else is down, but it's too late. Get this over.
This is a public comment, I came in late.
Yes.
Um, well, I just have one thing, and I don't know if you're gonna kick me out, cause it's not only agenda, but remember, um, I haven't been here for a few weeks. But when I was here, you had said that you had some constituents, Dan, that told you that the public measure for three to five. Was not spelled out, it was just a number, and so I just wanted to show you that, I mean, I'm sure that the auditor did it right. But it says, proposition by the eligible electors of Kamak County to increase the number of supervisors to five. Shall the following public measure be adopted? The number of Kamak County supervisors shall be increased from three members to five members. And I'll do it to you, but, you know, it's gonna, your constituents might not. I don't know why they told you that, but it's plainly spelled out here, so I just wanted to, I mean, the auditor did the right thing.
I'm, I'm sure she did, I'm sure she did the right thing.
Yeah.
She's all.
She's all high and stoked.
Okay, well, I just wanted you to know that it was spelled out on there, I wouldn't have even known.
Laura doesn't make any mistakes, we know that.
Not many, she doesn't get it out.
That's why she cannot leave.
She's training. I'll ask you in private how that training.
When I'm not around, right?
No, you, I'm asking you. Okay, I'm sure it's pretty helpful. It's, uh, hopefully it's, you're getting a contract because it's gonna be here before you know it. And it isn't, it's setting, it's made already, it's crazy.
Time goes fast, doesn't it?
Yeah. Crazy.
I think it goes faster to over.
Apparently, I think you're right. Tell the guys is, they started to count down already, it's in school for the days off.
Oh, have they?
Shoot, it's down there around like twenty-four.
Oh, really?
Crazy already.
And Laura, after you retire, time goes faster. Does it? You probably should stay here. Right here?
You, uh, you, you lose track of days, they, they all kinda run together.
I feel like my parents, we think it's Saturday every day. Every day. Well, tomorrow, it's not, it's not Saturday tomorrow, Mom, I have to go to work.
I shot, been a shot, Rod. Picture of this. About four tins.
Oh, God.
Told him, said my autograph's gonna look good on this.
Oh.
Cause he's not a fan.
No, no.
Oh, he is.
No.
Uh, just don't get over it. I won't tell you what he texted me back.
I was appreciating.
I did too, I liked that. I really did. It did wear on me a little bit, I was ready for, when it came together, I was ready for it to get over.
I was. I would think.
It's, it was a day weekend, summertime.
These are long in summer, like.
Yeah.
Well, maybe maybe, even Miles, they've got more work. On their four ends than they did the.
I have a question.
I have a question. The, uh, public hearing at nine forty-five, will everybody that asks to speak be allowed to speak?
At nine forty-five?
Yes. If you have more than each person three minutes? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, you're more than welcome.
Okay, I just wanna clarify, just in case people want, I mean, there's a number of people here, so.
Four minutes left, you have any other questions?
I only take more than one minute when I'm in the pulpit, you know that.
Yeah.
And I cut it short yesterday, so. And the best sermon was the kids' sermon, so, you know, and no kids there.
I was tempted to come up when you said that.
I would've read it to you, yeah. But I didn't bring it this morning, so I.
You should have.
I should.
What have them talking to, the boys signed into, yeah?
Yes, uh, there was a, yes, I believe, the union guys have signed this yet, or they wait for the supervisors to sign it?
Uh, I haven't had them sign it, I haven't, um, I guess, I didn't know, I guess wasn't the correct, procedure?
Either, either way, it's fine, they're just asking.
Okay, yeah.
For the ten hour days.
Yeah, they are.
So, no?
Yeah, maybe, yeah. Fifteen minute meeting. What? Oh, it could be a fifteen minute meeting down there. On the day we got the safer meetings.
Nope, no, no, it's not sweet.
Oh, that's.
He messed up.
No, he sent out a thing this morning.
It looked like it was gonna be this week, but.
Oh.
Yeah, I just got another email from here.
I see that.
It's next week.
Okay.
Last evening.
No?
No.
No. Tama County and Boca Cola.
I did say it.
Oh, you were going to.
No. No. You got it?
Okay, I guess we can get this going, um, can I get a motion to approve last week's minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll, I'll. We got a motion to second, um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, minutes have been approved. Ben? Laura? County Supervisor, County Engineer?
How you doing? I didn't know I was a supervisor.
Well, you, you too busy. You couldn't handle the stress.
I don't know, you might handle it or not.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, so, Cap guys working on their, uh, we just got our maps for Jericho, for Florid, so, um, we're gonna have them kinda working on those this next couple of weeks. Uh, Denko finished crack done on V thirty-seven this past week, um, and then Iowa, Virginia, Culver, um, they've removed that old, timber box that was on two twentieth, um, just west of V eighteen, um, I'll kinda keep the public updated on P Avenue, um, when they close that. Um, I think they were thinking, the contractor that was gonna do the dirt work and the removal on two twentieth, their subcontractor, um, was gonna move on to P afterwards, so, I'll try to keep the public informed on Facebook, so, um, and then hopefully there'll be, I think it's gonna be around a couple of months, um, timeframe on, on both those boxes. We got, uh, the road, road grimmer last week, um, we'll be more than likely putting that on our tractor, um, be kind of, right now, guys working on Florid, um, trying to figure out a timeframe of, um, one guy to get in there and kind of try to figure out how to schedule that. Be working with, uh, Tim on that to see how, how we can kind of get that, moving around the county.
They get that set up at all, or is it?
Um, not, not yet.
I wonder what kind of process, like, I make it sound like it's pretty simple.
Yeah, so, I think that's kinda where we're thinking we'll have, um, the, the guy that kind of demoed, uh, for us, who's gonna, we're gonna call him.
Oh.
Before we kind of, our first kind of,
Right.
go around, uh, it'd be a good, for the guys to kind of,
Yeah.
him to give us some tips and stuff, tips and tricks, so.
Figure that out, I'd like to have that on those two miles, the inch claim.
Oh, yeah, on, yep, yep, on X, yeah. And then, uh, we'll be picking up some seed this week to, with the rain, we're gonna get, get some things seeded up, so. Um, and then we have, uh, the four ten hour days here, um, for, for union here, um, they're one to begin, well, they'll be beginning after, um, Memorial Day on June third, um, and then we'll be going to, um, after, uh, so, well, right before Labor Day will stop, and then, um, when Labor Day happens, we'll go back to, um, five eights, so.
So, do you need a motion?
We're just signing a motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the, uh, the ten hour days?
I will make that motion.
I'll take that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You got it?
Dan, did you talk to anybody from DOT as far as, uh, less control on some of these gravel roads, it's, it's not gonna be, maybe, said that they're detours, but there's gonna be a lot more traffic on it. I'm thinking like each avenue of South Town.
I know that, um, when we do get that traffic, I gotta need to be contacting them, um, 'cause that's, co- contacting right now, they're, they're kind of, well, we don't know if that's a detour, or, you know, you know, unofficial, detour that people are gonna take in that, you know, plus dust, um, so, um, I'll just, you know, May sixth is what they've pulled me on, when they're closing that, or closing, uh, kind of the, by the bridge, I live there, and then all the way down to Highway six, would be, I, so, um, right now, that's, that's all I, I can come down for that.
They're closing that all the way down to six?
Correct.
The whole half we've been, or just past that?
They told me.
All.
All, so, I don't, I need to clarify if, what they're doing about the side streets, um, you know, well, side streets are the gravel roads.
Roads, yeah.
Um, 'cause I think, I, uh, I guess I don't wanna misspoke, misspeak and say that those are open and they won't be, but, um.
You know, grab people, we're gonna take gravel roads.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, you know, you'd say V eighteen, it's, it's like three or four miles from sixty-three.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, you know, if you're, gravel roads are a whole thing, a mile away there.
Yeah.
You're gonna get a lot more traffic, so.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they officially or unofficially, but I think they should go, really help us out here.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll be calling them this week to, I guess, let them know that we will probably, more than likely, do it. I think maybe communicating with them, sure. You can go ahead.
You guys have nothing else? You good for the day, week?
Sure.
All right. Thanks, Ben.
Hey, Ben, I got a quick question for you, tip right away.
No.
Go ahead. Did you have something you could know first?
Nope.
Um, when is the, uh, Vienna repowering starting, is, it's supposed to be on May or June, does that have a date yet? For when, 'cause those roads are gonna get busier too, so I was curious when that was starting.
May, I know May seventh, uh, I got an email from them just last week.
Okay.
And their kind of construction manager, um, so it's May seventh, we're gonna kind of set up a date, or set up a time there and kind of go over, when their full, full date is gonna go, or their actual timeline and whatnot, so.
Okay. So, tentatively this summer, but we're not really sure on a date yet, you'll figure that out after May seventh, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I don't know, they talked to it being kickoff meeting, so I don't know if that means the end of May there, they'll be starting.
Okay, yep, that'll be good, 'cause it'll get busy getting blades taken out, you know, trucks coming in, cranes coming, it's gonna get busy, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't ask, anybody else? HR?
Um, what are you guys doing June fifth? Benefits day, that's what you're doing.
Think I'm out of town.
Indian state.
No.
Ah, it's benefits day, you guys got anything planned? You know, whatever, look at all of you.
I would be out of state, pretty.
You will?
Yes.
Okay, well, I will train you when you get back.
Why do you believe him and not me?
Gee, I wonder why. No, June fifth, uh, we'll be getting here, what'd you say? Yeah. Are you, are you gonna be army? No, um, so we have three times set up, we'll do the roads in the morning, um, like we normally do, and we'll have a two more. And so, Bernie Love Associates will come again, uh, and do that, so. And don't forget, the second of May is stroke screening, if you guys signed up for it.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
June, June fifth, yeah.
I'll write it down, tentatively.
And, um, yeah, and then don't forget May sec, or, yeah, May second, if you did it, if you did it last year, you don't have to do it, 'cause some of the people missed it, so.
The.
The stroke screening, and if you didn't do it, you wanna do it, call them, get it set up. I'll send, I'm gonna send a flyer out one more time this week, just to make sure.
Did you say it, the first session down there?
Uh, the first session is gonna be at night, that'll be roads department, and then ten thirty-one. So, any time that dates is perfectly fine, and that's it.
Everything's kosher with that, if you have your appointment already, you don't have to call them again or anything, yeah. Okay. All right, is that it?
That's it.
That's it? Can I get a motion to accept last week's claims?
I'll make a motion to approve claims, I will second that, this week's, uh, claims are a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents.
Okay, we got a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, claims are being approved? Thanks, Laura. Uh, approved credit card for treasurer's office?
Let me see if she wanted to come down.
You guys look over the spectrums of their.
Yeah.
She must be busy.
Okay.
Um, she has, she had visited with me about it, um, so we have new employees in that office, and Amanda, the treasurer, that office never had a county credit card to use for ordering, so she would like to, um, have your approval to allow them to have a credit card, and have her and, uh, all of her. Amanda, Sarah Kriegel, Amanda Morris, Beth Young, and Melissa DeTas, as signers on there. It has to be approved by you first before the bank will let her have a credit card. So, we just need a motion, and it's second, get here, and in agreement with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't have. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report, we had this already, or, most of us, I think, Bill, you've seen it too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've read it.
Can I get a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report, I will second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, on that credit card, who monitors that, who supervises that, who, who can, he's, you know, credit cards can get folks into lots of trouble. All right, we have a credit card policy, the county does, it has to be paid off each month, can't have, um, sales tax on it, can't have tips on it, and it goes through our office for claims, and Karen does a good job of making sure there's not anything on there, the credit limit's five thousand, so. And they're mostly used for, we have to book rooms for a meeting, uh, hotel rooms, or order things online. Any more, uh, companies want paid right away instead of invoicing us, and so that's why we started using credit cards.
Five thousand per month?
I, total, yeah, yeah.
I think you stopped moving. Looked for it three times. Heather, you got your place looking nice?
Thank you, thank you, we got some mowing in in between rains, so that worked out good. 'Cause I figured if I don't mow, it's gonna be like a foot tall by the end of the week when it quits.
Got a couple of big trees, it just, every time the wind just blows a little bit, both limbs down, so. Mowed twice, ready to pick them things up, but.
After that ice storm, we got a lot of those hangers, we need to rent a room someday.
Widowmaker.
Yes, they are. That's what they say, anyway.
That's what they say.
Do you live right in town, or? So, the, the city, the cities up there do brush pickup day also?
I believe so. Yeah, they don't, no? They do, uh, yeah, you, you don't need to.
They do yard, you should put brush out if it's smaller.
Yeah, they do, I thought so, yeah, yeah, they do yard waste, yeah.
You can't just pile it out on the street, they won't pick it up then?
No, but you can haul it out to the.
Right, we gotta brush dump there.
Yeah.
Uh, the tame assign that was given to us, is it gonna be put up there?
I think it's, we haven't talked about it, I guess, Dan, we forgot about that, um, did you, could you hear that?
Oh, I couldn't hear it from everything.
Okay, um, that thing was on the depot here.
That's where I thought it came from, yeah.
And you thought it would kinda be cool to hang up in here, and
Sure.
they're all talking about maybe up there if it fits, um, or if it doesn't fit there, I think that'd be kinda cool over there too. Um, we have to talk to Dirk, I guess, but, I, I think they should, I, I'd love it to have it in, in, in here, I think that'd be kinda cool, but. We have to run down the maintenance, man.
Yeah.
Everything else is hanging on that wall, though.
Yeah.
It'd be good up there, right by the flag.
Well, yeah.
From my angle.
It'd be easier since it's, like, it's a top.
Well, then it's gonna change next week, you're sitting over there, you're looking that way, and it's gonna change.
Just make you keep living it.
I don't think Dirk will go for that.
You don't think? Okay, we have a public hearing on ordinance V dash fourteen. What did I do with that? Annie?
Yes, is it okay if I just speak from here?
You're main.
Okay. Um, and so, um, from the ordinance, I'm going to address, um, the Rules of Conduct section, and I'm not gonna read what's on it, that would take up my three minutes. Um, there's three paragraphs within item number three. The first paragraph is pretty lengthy, and I propose that, um, the only two sentences that that really needs to include is, "Any person may address the board and recognized by the board chair. Comments to the board shall be limited to three minutes per person," and you could strike all the other language in that paragraph. The next paragraph under number three starts with "No person, no person shall represent blah blah blah." Um, I think that that, uh, you should strike that whole section as it violates the right to free speech. Who and how will it be determined what is irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious on the part of the public? Isn't the purpose of public meetings to listen to and welcome public input? And who is to say that reports and documents prepared by county personnel are relevant material, and the weight or competency thereof shall be determined by the board? The public should also be allowed to comment on the work of county employees and elected officials in the free country. The third paragraph in number three, um, strike this whole section as well. It's not practical for the public to know who's speaking on what in advance of the meeting, and the board should listen to public input for as many speakers who want to speak, and they are each entitled to speak for three minutes. The board of supervisors are not censors, and ordinance should not permit them to censor and stifle public input.
Laura, do we have a, do we have a, or can I get the, a copy of the, what we have for ordinance now, or?
Yeah, if you don't have it?
I might, but I have no clue where it's at. Please?
My name is Al Shif, well, I live in Dodger. Last week I said I had a problem with one word. This year, today I believe, after looking it over, I have a problem with that whole Code of Conduct. Anything in this ordinance that come from the code is what should be in this ordinance, that's what the state code says, if you wanna put it out as a guidance, that's wonderful, that's, that's what we need, but the rest of it was written by the lawyers or the attorneys from the insurance company. They're not looking out for the citizens of Tame County, they're looking out for the insurance company. So I put it on you to look carefully at this ordinance and do what is right for the citizens of Tame County, not what is right for the insurance company.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Heather Knibble, um, Rural Chair, running for Tame County Supervisor for District Three. Um, I, I definitely don't agree with the putting it actually in this, um, ordinance to do three minutes per person agenda items only. Um, I'm a very, um, proud supporter of the First Amendment, I think you should listen to everyone on any topic, you know, you can regulate that down to only three minutes, but, you know, if this whole room wanted to speak for three minutes each on any topic, I would love that, as a supervisor. I want to hear, and like, the good thing is, they could do some of the research for you guys, so if there's things happening in other counties, because people are now watching other counties, they could bring that back to you guys, instead of having to email or call or blow over your guys' phones, or as well as like, the Tame County Engineer, I don't know if this, you know, applies to that too, if I could have that feedback with him after he talks or not, but otherwise, he's gonna be getting calls, so, I think if people are gonna take work off or wanna show up and talk, they should be able to talk about anything, because we're, you know, you guys are elected officials, you're elected here, and I think you should really listen to the public, we have a lot of really good people that have good, um, opinions, ideas, even if you don't agree with them, it's good to listen, you might learn something, you might, you know, maybe I should look into that, because it's something I don't know much about, so, I think, uh, that would be my biggest thing, is, you know, I think free most speech is, you know, something in the constitution that we really need to follow, and I don't, I don't think it's gonna hurt, I think the group is, you know, very civil, and this ordinance, you know, leads to having civil conversations, and I think that's what this county needs, we need to have, be a community again, we need to really talk about issues and things that are going on and learn from others and try to, try to make it better, so. I would appreciate that consideration, because the hard part is too, if, if the new supervisors get in there, this ordinance is in there, then what? The first, you know, several meetings, we gotta go back through public hearings. So if the new five supervisors want to let people talk, are they not allowed to? You know, that seems kind of strange too, or can this have an end date, can it end, you know, and let the new supervisors decide? But the problem is, like I said, if they gotta go through three more public hearings, that might be the month of January that nobody can stand up and talk, and that, that hurts me, so, um, I want people to be able to talk, and, you know, we have a lot of new candidates running, and they need to be able to learn from people, not just make their own decisions, so, thank you guys.
I'm Karen.
Okay, what's left?
I'm, um, Murry. Related to every who shocked, divorce shocks, and all that, and every other bohemian Tame County, plus, see the rounds? The check village probably. I am concerned about the severity of this ordinance, in that, um, we bring a lot, the public brings a lot to these meetings, research that maybe the supervisors haven't had time to, um, investigate themselves, things that we've seen, um, read, looked into, investigated ourselves, um, and over the last many weeks and months, we have added to, and that's why we're here, is to be part of the governing public and information source, and as resources for information. It's really hard to just talk to one supervisor at a time, because then we have to trust that all three of you, and then it's gonna be five, are talking about and sharing what we've already said to maybe one of you, and that's, that is so difficult. Um, we've done that, uh, we never know if it goes any farther, we never know if the things that are, that we requested to be on the agenda are actually going to be on the agenda when we get here, and so, Heather alluded to the fact that so many people take time off to come here, and then if you get here and you can't talk, or your agenda item didn't come up, or, or it's not even brought up, no time. It was brought up that, that nobody wanted to be here into the afternoon, you know what, we've never been here past eleven o'clock, and that includes afterwards meetings that you guys have, um, sometimes just new speakers or somebody else's agenda, um, issues. So, I brought up a month ago that this is more severe than stealing and, uh, car theft and everything else, and, um, I was told, yes, it is more severe than that. That's unbelievable to me, that this, that these meetings and us being here would be more heavily reprimanded and more severely, uh, punished for speaking than people who are actually breaking laws in Tame County. That's just unbelievable to me, but I was told, yes, this is a very severe document, so to make it mandatory, um, it's frightening to me that that would happen in Tame County, Iowa, it's frightening, thank you.
Kurt?
Yeah?
I would like to make a comment. I don't believe the actions of the public and the interaction between the public and the board, for a long time, has been very civil, and I don't believe we need to have a huge update that basically takes some of the rights of the public away from us. I believe any board I've been on has always wanted public comment, and for the supervisors to basically shut down public comment is not good. And I believe that what we have currently is adequate, and for you guys to restrict future supervisors by enacting an ordinance that really isn't necessary, you know, my opinion is, just table the whole thing, so. Thank you for listening.
Well, I, I would like to comment, or, do I have to go out there, or?
No, you're fine.
Carolyn, I agree with Richard, um, I've been coming for two, three years, that seems like, um, and I really haven't seen anything that's been bad. You may not have agreed with what the public has to say, but I think, um, we have a right to express our opinion, and I think you, wouldn't you rather have us here expressing it and calling you all the time, you never get anything, rather just call all the time? Maybe I'm wrong, but, um, I, I think that this really just tries to stifle everything. And on the Conservation Board, if you have people come, a lot of times they're coming because they're complaining about things, but that's good, I mean, I wanna hear what they're complaining about, maybe we can help, maybe they don't understand, you know, you don't know, so, um, it's a good opportunity to explain what's, why we're doing such things, and sometimes they don't agree, but we can explain why we're doing it, so I kind of think that the supervisors are similar, we, you may not like what we have to say, we may have a different opinion, we may say something that you hadn't even thought about, so, I, this, this is just some lawyers that are, you know, trying to stifle, this is what it looks to me like, and, um, so I, I think you should take a, a, a good look at this and maybe do table it, I, I'm not sure, but, um, there's just way too much of stifling of the public opinion.
I would like to say one more thing, there's been times, many times, we'd come in here not knowing what the agenda was going to be, and there's been some firecracker issues that were brought up, so, there's been times that this room has been standing room only. So under these new, um, ordinances, um, everybody would be removed, because there were so many people that we, it was very difficult to take a turn to talk. So according to these, everybody would be sent out and told to go home. That's, that's sad, because those people, back when that was going on, that's a lot of people that came in here caring about the place that they grew up in and loved to live in, Tame County. And that could happen in the future, because we don't know what issues are coming up, six months, or eight months, or next year, we don't know. Thank you.
Just a quick question, uh, has the county attorney been allowed to look at this, to see if it was legal?
I don't know, Tammy?
Nope.
Sure do you?
No. He doesn't deal with us on this stuff, he, he prosec, he prosecutes us, that's what he does. Everything that's in this is in the code, it's not anything new, the ordinance is just telling everybody what you need to be doing, instead of them having to go look at each code section, um, you legally don't have a right to talk at a board meeting unless they allow it. That is in the code, um, so I think it's protecting you guys as it is them. Because you're getting that time, put in your ordinance, and hey, maybe next board comes in, and they don't wanna hear from anybody, you don't have a choice. The only way you can express your concerns is you have to email, call, write, whatever, you know, whatever choice you, you decide to use, but, um, it is to make it better for everybody, and the Idaho Public Information Board, um, they just doubled their rates, uh, for mistakes, whether, um, intentional or not, and they hired, they're hiring another employee, and they are gonna be checking on boards and making sure boards are following protocol. So it's not only to protect you guys, it's to protect them, and everything that is in there is in the code. Huh?
I don't believe everything that's in there is in the code. Part of it is, could you reference the code with certain items?
It, it is.
With the part about, particularly about the Code of Conduct, that's not from the.
The Code of Conduct, um, is definitely developed to, we have our choice on what we wanna say in the Code of Conduct, um, but it is a misdemeanor, that is in the code, um, so, being, and, and all it is trying to do is keep orderly conduct, that's all. Nobody said you couldn't talk, um, but they don't have to let you talk, but it's in the ordinance that they let you talk. So I think it's good for both sides, it, although you might not think so, it is.
Does the current board agree that it should be agenda items only, or how do you guys feel? Like, do you feel like it should be on any topic, each person gets three minutes during public comment time? Or do you still agree that it should be the agenda items only, like you previously agreed?
I'm the new, I'm guessing I'm the newbie, I didn't experience the real bad situations, um, but I guess I don't have a problem with speaking your mind on anything. But it does, it did calm that down, or, you know, that, that situation, so, um, I, you know, I haven't really experienced anything, get out of control here, you know, but I, I wasn't here for the time that, you know, um, so yeah, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm, I'm pretty easy, but, I don't know about these guys, I mean.
We already have a policy on that, that you speak on agenda items only.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just seeing what their opinions were, if you guys still agree with that, because that's something that's not, like, it is true that you don't have to let people speak currently, you have agenda, I'm curious what you guys think, if you think that it still should just be agenda, or if you would like to, even if it's only three minutes, would you like to hear from people, especially in the middle of this election coming, would you like to be hearing from people, and just, just a thought?
I think agenda items only is really good because it keeps you focused on what, it, it, it just doesn't let everybody go off and talk about all kinds of things. You can always, you can always call any of us if you have things that are addressed, you can email us, you can write us, you can whatever, talk to us, we want to call, but it keeps, it keeps the, the meeting going forward.
I would go with the agenda items only myself.
Okay, thank you.
Under the procedures for meetings, um, couldn't, if we're gonna do this, could we add a tenth item that the public made the request to have an item placed on the supervisor's meeting agenda by calling the auditor, and, um, then the request from the public can be honored by the county staff preparing a public agenda? So that if we had something, I mean, we, we've gotta think through the process, we've gotta call the auditor, get it placed on the agenda, then, um, you know, then it can be talked about.
You can only put.
Something that can be placed, added to this. Something that can be placed, added to this.
The agenda is for action items only. So you wouldn't be able to do that.
What about the work session? Is that something they could add topics to the work session if they agreed on whatever topic?
That would be up to them if they wanted to do that.
That might be a good time to do the work session, that you could actually have a work session and say, okay, we want to talk about this that the public has brought up to you guys.
It's an idea. You gotta be here anyway. We get to be here.
It'd be a good way to interact with the people during the work session.
Is this something that all ninety-nine counties are doing?
No.
No?
No.
Just us?
Right now, just us.
There are no other counties that have this presently?
We, uh, no. We're the first county to do it.
Did you say it's the Heartland Risk Pool Insurance one that are all doing it?
We are, we are, we're meeting again with them over it. They're, I mean, they're all gonna be taken into consideration. It would have to be changed for each county, and each county would have to adopt it. But I can't, we can't make them adopt that. But this, with the change in Iowa Public Board and Information Board and all the changes, it is a good idea. We have five supervisors as of the beginning of the year. It's great. When you commit as a supervisor, you don't know. You really do not what, know what's going on when you come to work here. And so that will help guide you. You'll know, you know, how you, you can look, you can find the information to pass ordinances. You can, it, it tells you about, you know, family members. It talks about a lot of stuff in there. It is in the code. It, it is. It's just in a simple document, and it's beneficial, I believe, to the new supervisors coming on too. It helps them. And that's what we're already doing. What is in that code or in that ordinance is what we're already doing. So, you know, it just checks and balances, keeping everybody the way it's supposed to be.
Sounds like more of a handbook kind of a thing, right? Like, checks and balances?
Well, it, but it doesn't cost anything in the handbook if you make a mistake. It costs them lots of money if they make mistakes. And the fines just double. So we don't want to have to be paying fines for mistakes. And unintentional mistakes are still starting out. The fine, I think, starts at five hundred. Intentional, those are very high. I think they go up to twelve thousand five hundred now. So it can get very expensive if you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing. So it, it holds them accountable too, the board.
So, um, Tama County is the only one of the Heartland Risk Pool that is moving forward?
Well, we just started this. We just got it done. We, they haven't had the opportunity to do anything yet.
Who's with you?
I just got it done. I'll say, I just got it done, and.
You did this yourself? You wrote this, I mean?
Uh, yeah. Yes, I did.
Oh. I thought this was something that went out to all ninety-nine counties?
No. No, 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 no. This is an ordinance that.
It's a Tammy ordinance.
It's a Tammy ordinance. In agreement with Heartland Attorney, he went over it, made sure it was all correct before I shared it. And it's, it, it's important for the board to follow the code. And it's important for the public to follow the code. And that's what this ordinance does. It just lays it out right there for you.
I have a question. If this code is that important, why isn't our attorney, our county attorney, being allowed to put his input on this?
We don't use the county attorney for that. We never have.
He's been elected though by the public.
I know he has.
So what's his job?
We should be. He's the one that the supervisor should reach out to for advice. And he may have to outsource it if it's not his area, but they should be using that hand.
He should be our first go-to person before we outsource.
He's not. He's not. He doesn't get into the day-to-day stuff with us. He just, he does prospecting.
Okay, one of the items that I had identified, when the ordinance says it's, you know, states right now, no person shall represent irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious statements or information. So my question was, who? And how will it be determined what is irrelevant, immaterial?
That would be the board's decision. That's what's in the board.
So if I brought something up and they, they would, five people say that is unduly repetitious?
Well, I mean, you're not gonna, you're, you're not gonna bring anything up like that during the regular board meeting because you're gonna follow the protocol of a board meeting. And that is that you only, when you have your time to speak right now, you only speak about the subjects on the agenda. If they change that, that's when you can do that. But if you have concerns or you want to tell them something, you guys know how to get ahold of them. Everybody can get ahold of them. You can talk to them, you can call them, whatever you like.
So they could strike me down and say, that is immaterial, please be seated.
Well, I think, well, I, I, right. I mean, that's their choice. It's their board meeting.
But it's five people. You think all five are gonna have the same opinion? Or are they gonna vote that this is immaterial? I mean, it's just so in the weeds. It's just like we're, we're inviting more controversy just by, you know, determining, well, who? You know, the language is just so obscure.
The board chair has done a very good job. Bill was, I think, on board with maybe Larry, then Bill, and now Kurt. Conducting and keeping the meetings going in order legally. And there have been people over the last few years that have been asked to leave just because of the calming down was becoming a factor. But if you go to page five, any person who is a board chair, chairman, who has made personal pertinent slander or unauthorized remarks during the meeting, or interfered with orderly auditions, shall be removed from the room by the deputy in attendance. Okay, so we've had to do that. A little bit, not to where the deputy actually handcuffed and drug somebody out of here, which I don't, since we're saying. Sort of an example for the rest of the state of Iowa. Do we really want that on the front page of the Cedar Rapids Gazette? Tama County removed little old ladies for disorderly contact, which, thank you, Ken. I mean, sure. And in case the board chair should fail to act, so Kurt doesn't want to act, there's four other people sitting there who we don't even know right now they're going to be. So any of those other four people who maybe they don't like one of us, we, we don't know. We don't know who's coming in. Any member of that board may then opt in for and move to require enforcement of this rule. And the deputy again shall be authorized, poor deputy, whoever that sucker's gonna be, to remove the person or persons from personal attendance and be barred for further, from further meetings. My goodness! It's the law. It's, no, no, it's what you're trying to implement. To be the law. No, it is law.
Misdemeanor?
That you can, yes, it is in the code. It's in the code. I mean, what?
It's a precedent for the whole state of Iowa.
So again, again, the reason we need this is because.
So will they all shut up?
No, because you need to be nice when you're here. And you're not very nice.
Nobody's ever cussed in here. There's worse language in the schoolroom than there is in this room for my last several years.
All right, one, one more hand.
Okay. This reminds me a lot about politicians in Washington DC. Every time there's an election, they talk about transparency with the public. And then when they get elected, if they get elected, they hide in their bunker in the basement. They don't have any public meetings. And when they do, this is going on right now. When they do have a public, or a press meeting, they have a list of names that they can call. Okay, you can speak now, Kurt, or you can speak now, Dan. People they don't want to speak don't get asked to speak, which you would have control over being the supervisors. And I think this is what we're going on in Washington DC, it's that very same thing.
I think this should be tabled also.
We have one more reading, correct?
Yep.
But we have a date set for that?
I think it'd be a good idea to have some other people do this first, and then look to see what they did and copy what is good and, and working.
You don't want to be the first guy typically. Learn from others.
Okay, I think we'll end this meeting.
Okay, we'll adjourn it, or close the meeting at ten seventeen.
Well, this.
We'll do the budget one, right?
Close the hearing.
Okay, that's what it was like.
Do we need a motion to end the second reading? Okay, I'll make a motion to end the second reading of the ordinance being fourteen.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second on favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. What is that third day by chance?
May sixth at nine forty-five.
Bet if I turn to me, I have it.
I bet it's in there.
Okay, we will go on. We will go on to the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Okay, we've gotten everything entered. Had all our notices published before this one. And so we are suggesting that you have the public hearing. Look here. May thirteenth, I believe, no, sorry, April thirtieth.
April thirtieth.
April thirtieth at ten AM.
That's tomorrow.
This is public hearing for the budget. This is happening.
You've been in to May thirteenth.
No, it's today.
Today's the.
Oh, oh, okay. Sorry, I got mixed up where we were, because all of us, yes.
Hey, it's okay.
Okay, so you guys have worked on it. And this year, the property taxes levied amount eleven thousand nine hundred eighty-six thousand and eighty-four dollars, which is an increase of one million four hundred fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven from last year's. This is due to an increase in the number of supervisors, increased insurance cost, and rebuilding fund balance reserves for the next fiscal year because we are getting low and we've been told by the auditor that audits me that we need to build those back up and increasing legal costs. That would make, uh, that would make. Nope, that's it.
Any comments? I know I'm staying, gonna play games with this, I think, cutting next year too. I think that's why we were kind of advised to take notice. So I know I've had a couple little get on me about the raises, and this really has nothing to do with what we've done. It's what's gonna happen in the future with our funding. So I'd like to get that out there. We needed, we needed to do that for all employees in this county because we were very, very, very far behind everybody else. So I personally can see, easy at night, understanding the situation with that deal, because it really has nothing to do with the actual, this, this increase. So there's no comments? Yes?
Do we have any more readings, or is it?
Nope, this is it.
This is it. Do you own the motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution four dash twenty-nine, dash twenty-two, twenty-four A. I will second it.
Okay, and your call?
Yeah. Kurt?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Thank you. Then there's another resolution, or there is a resolution, that was for twenty-nine, twenty-two, twenty-four A. And then there's one that's attached to it that's required by recent legislation, which lists elected officials, their current salary, their increase, and then the new salary. And I have copies of that up there if anybody wants to look at it. So that's resolution four twenty-nine, twenty-two, twenty-four B.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution four twenty-nine, twenty-two, twenty-four B.
I will second that.
Okay, your call?
Kurt?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
We did, this is kind of off base, but we did have some good news, I think. We had an insurance screening the other day, and there are people trying to fight back, starting to fight back on this. The doctors are starting to fight back on this insurance getting out of hand. I'm not sure what they called that, when they're all getting together.
Yeah, they, they have their, they're developing their own, like, clinic where we can, we're not part of it yet, but we're hoping to be part of it, to where they do all the surgeries and stuff at a specific clinic with specific doctors. The cost is about half of what we're paying right now for traditional services. Medicine isn't helping us yet, except hopefully it will with IV. If IV can buy meds out of the country.
So that was, that's, that, he, then he felt, he felt like that's something that's gonna get bigger.
Oh, yeah.
He thought this was gonna be a good thing. So that will help, because our insurance guys is, is kicking our rear end. Of course, it's, it's just terrible. In society, it's just terrible. So I think that's a good way, I mean, they're going, that's a good, good start. And he was very confident that it's gonna get bigger. So, so insurance is not, not a good subject right now. But anyway, I thought I'd throw that out there. I guess we can end, end this public hearing.
And we, we can adjourn that at ten twenty-three.
Okay.
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 Have a good week.